I want to call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, March the 12th, 2024. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilman Booker to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and followed by an invocation for council. Stand if you'd like to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you today for tonight, God, Lord, in the city of Greer, on this beautiful afternoon here to serve your city. Father, we ask you to just continue to be with us here tonight, Lord. And I thank you for this council and the mayor that's able to put partisan politics aside and be here for the people to serve here in Greer, God. Lord, we ask you to, as we have some heavy decisions tonight, we ask you to bestow your wisdom like you did on King Solomon, Lord. We ask you just to increase our wisdom tonight like never before, God. And Lord, we also pray the prayer of J. Baz over the city of Greer, God, that you enlarge our territory, but also bless us indeed, Father. And Lord, we just thank you for everything that Greer is going to be doing, generational change that could be potentially taking place, God. And Lord, continue to guide our steps and guide our footsteps and our minds and everything that we say and do, Father. And Lord, I'd be remiss tonight if we not celebrate the season of the death, burial, resurrection of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who thought it not robbery to come down off that cross and conquered death, hell, and the grave, Father. And Lord, we ask you, in the matchless name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Counsel, in public forum, we entertain residents that wish to address items that are on the agenda. We have one person to have signed up for that. And as we do from time to time, to entertain those that wish to speak in public forum, we ask that you come to the podium. And if you will, state your name and address as a matter of record. We only have one to appear before us this evening. I would just ask that you be mindful of the time as you speak with council. So Laura Allen, floor is yours.
Okay. My name is Laura Allen. I live at 38 Meadow Springs Lane in Greer. I wanted to speak in regards to the second item and the new business, of course, the $100 million project. I don't have much to say. The biggest thing I want to comment on that is not only specific to this project, but really came to a head today, I think, is the circular logic that everyone in this city uses to continue to approve the sale of every last piece of this city to the highest bidder. You all approve new housing development after new housing development, right? And then you use that to justify new development like this, right? Because now you say, well, we need the infrastructure, we need the facilities, we need X, Y, Z. And then once we have those facilities, you all say, oh, well, now we have this infrastructure, now we have these facilities, so now let's go ahead and approve more irresponsible housing, more townhomes, more overpriced apartments that nobody here can actually afford except people coming from New York and California and God knows where else. And I just think that's incredibly problematic, and I want it brought to your attention that people notice that. I also really took issue with a lot of the comments that I've seen in the local news today regarding growth and projected growth. Things like the city administrator saying, we're tracking this rate of growth, we know it's coming, we don't want to be found waiting on something we know is coming, and that we have been shortsighted in providing the bare necessities and services. I think, for starters, I find that comical considering how far we've gone with growth and don't have the infrastructure to support it. But beyond that, I think my problem with it is that the growth of this city is only going to be what you all allow. So we talk about this rapid growth and this rapid growth, and we have to prepare for the rapid growth that's coming. The growth is only coming if you all continue to allow it to come. And there are residents that are begging you all to stop it or to slow down, to do it responsibly, and you all continue to approve development completely irresponsibly, way too fast, unsustainably. And so I take issue with you all acting like this level of growth is unavoidable, I guess, inevitable. Some growth, I suppose, is inevitable, but this rate that we're growing at right now is certainly not inevitable, and I think it's incredibly irresponsible on city leadership part. So that's the primary issue that I have also, that I think a 500-spot parking garage is ridiculous at this time. And again, I think that you all will continue to use that as justification for bringing in more homes and more businesses that we really don't need in the city. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, let's move to the minutes of the council meetings. We've got two this evening. I'll take those individually. February 27th was a workshop, 2024. I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes.
Counsel, in your packet as well, two are the minutes from the February 27th meeting in 2024. I'll entertain a motion to receive those. So move. And a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes.
Counsel, we've had someone to speak in public forum and now a petitioner. We've hit both of those this evening. A petitioner is one that asks to come before council and make a petition known in regards to an issue that doesn't necessarily make the agenda as an item, but is of relevance to the petitioner. We will entertain the petition, but much like what we do in public forum, we will take that under advisement, and if anybody on this council wants to pursue further action, that is up to them. This evening, we have a petitioner by the name of Bo Hyfield. Mr. Hyfield, the podium is yours, sir. If you would state your name and address as a matter of record, we would appreciate it.
Can I click through this, or do I have to ask someone else? All right, cool. All right. My name is Bo Hyfield and 47 years old, live 333 Cornelsen Drive in the Panorama Farms Development, which is I'd of North Main, across the street, across Wade Hampton. Been there since April 2019, when I purchased the house five years ago. OIF veteran, law-abiding citizen, taxpayer, which is pretty much anyone that lives in the city, I suppose. So the problem is, I don't know how, well, you can see this map, but this is the zoning My house is right where that black line is connected to, and then the actual problematic business that I'm here to address is the other end of the black line, named Bemis Wedding Events Venue is what they're called. So they apparently were brought in to this area after the Greer Athletic Club left in 2020 or 2021. As you can see, there's houses all around this location, including some within 100 or 200 feet. So zoning was approved for this place, Bemis, as an event center, exception to whatever zoning regulations you guys had. They don't seem to have any special zoning, at least when this was approved, for an event center. So this event center comes into our area, and they play loud music at night occasionally. Like I stated, they're within a couple hundred feet of many residential houses. Mine's about 700 feet away, maybe 800 feet. Mostly this occurs on Saturday nights in its intermittent, we don't know when it's going to be, but they have weddings and other venues there. I'm all for the business and them be able to be successful. I don't want to hear their music. That's all it comes down to me. So the music and bass is sometimes excessive and disruptive past 10:00 p.m., and this has repeatedly occurred and has been very noticeable to me in regards to my location, which is about 800 feet away. It prevents sleep, and it's very disrespectful of local residents who are so close to Bemis. I can only imagine the folks that are 100 feet away, how much this must bother them. They may not be complaining about it, but I'm willing to. And the reason why I really came, because I thought this problem had been resolved. I spoke with Mr. Dumas about this, and I thought we had got them under control. But in February 2024, which is about a month, month and a half ago, I had to go over to Bemis at 12:00 a.m., and there was a guy with a food truck with speakers, loud bass, blasting very loud music, very loud bass. I mean, it was shaking my walls 800 feet away. It did not stop till 12:30 a.m. I think that's pretty unacceptable. I'm pretty sure no one in this room would want that in their neighborhood. So the problem that I, through my research and speaking with Mr. Dumas, the police, Mr. Merriman, there's no noise ordinance currently in the city that can help with this problem. There's no mechanism or remedy for Greer City citizens to deal with excessive noise during night hours or anytime. I know this because I've tried. Sort of me going over there and yelling at those folks, there's nothing I can do. Call the police, they say, there's nothing we can do. Call the city councilman, he says there's nothing he can do. So PD cannot enforce this, they can only ask nicely for these folks to turn this music down. City council, same thing. City administrator cannot force this business to respect the residents within their area, based on what I found out. Now, was this true or not? This is what I've been told by multiple folks, though. Greer PD has been called on at least four occasions regarding this. I called them three times. There was another, one of my neighbors, she was further away, that called them one time. Those dates are September 22, December 23, January 23, and February 2024. I notified Mr. Dumas February 23, and bro once again spoke with him on February 24. Myself and my HOA president went along with the Greer PD officer. We went over and actually met with the owner of Bemis, so we did our due diligence to try to get these folks to be reasonable. It was not productive, they did not want to hear our concerns, they were dismissive and disrespectful of our requests. The request was simply to either turn down the music at 10:00 p.m. or soundproof their buildings. Now, that would not have stopped the food truck from blasting a parking lot and making noise. No doubt, a soundproofed building is not going to help there. But why is there a person out there in a food truck blasting music at 12:30 a.m. in the middle of a residential zone? That's the question I would ask. I mean, I don't know, because I would never do that to anybody, disdain or disrespectfully. I met with Mr. Merriman last month, he told me to petition the city council, and that's why I'm here. So in conclusion, because I only have a short amount of time, and I propose that the city council will at least debate a resolution to get a noise ordinance on the books. I know the city of Greenville recently did that. I know we're not as big as the city of Greenville, but I know that this city is getting large, as the previous speaker stated about the great growth we have in this city. If you don't do a noise ordinance, eventually this is going to come back, and you're going to have to do it at one point or another, because it's going to get to the point where it's going to get more and more businesses coming in, more and more people. So why not do it now? Is it going to please me? I mean, just one person is not going to necessarily, I mean, it's not going to solve my, it's going to solve everyone's problem, not just my problem, is what I'm trying to get, because there could be a lot of people that are not saying anything, not complaining, not calling the PD. I'm just an outspoken person, as you can tell, and I'm willing to do that. I also would question why business like this was approved for zoning as an event center in a residential neighborhood, knowing that they're going to be having wedding venues with loud music in the evening hours? That's a question I cannot answer. Only the zoning board, I suppose, the folks on this council, maybe will answer that question, because I do not know. Because if it was me, I would never approved it, because I think it's disrespectful to the folks that live there. So in conclusion, is there any questions? I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I appreciate your time, and I hope you take this up for at least debate.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
But I can leave, right?
You can, yes.
At this hour?
Yeah, you should begin, should be able to, yep. Counsel, let's move to the administrator's report. Mr. Merriman.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, just a few reminders. First of all, by the end of this month, March 30th, your statements of economic interests are due, so please ensure that those are submitted, and there's the online portal that'll allow you to do that with the State Ethics Commission. Reminder also that the food truck rollout is Friday, March 15th. It's Friday from 5:00 to 8:00. We've got a lot of our finest local food trucks, live music, and refreshing beverages, so please support that. That initiative has always been real popular. The other thing is the Egg Tastic Easter event at City Park is March 23rd from 11:00 to 1:00. This is obviously designed for kids and our families, but it's free activities, which include inflatables, crafts, games, and egg hunts, and they will run continuously throughout the event, but we would ask that you register online. Want to, two real quick things. Congratulate our tourism division, led by Lindsay Schaefer, and our Greer Station Merchants, who recently placed silver at the Southeast Festivals and Events Association's Kaleidoscope Awards Gala for Best Event Within an Event. So good job to Lindsay and our tourism folks and our partners at the Greer Station Merchants. And finally, if you've not noticed, on Trade Street downtown, Public Services is doing some essential work on our brick pavers. They're applying the sand that's necessary to maintain those bricks in place. So starting today, the 12th, certain roads will be closed block by block for the top dressing, making sure that they stay intact and safe. Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions, that concludes my report.
Counsel, as usual, administrator would be glad to answer any questions or any follow-ups that need to be done. Department heads are available as well, too. With that said, counsel, let's move to items of old business. We only have two this evening, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 10-2024. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Inglacius Pentecostas Fuente de Aguavilla Incorporated, located on Arlington Road, by 100% petition, and to establish a zoning classification of office professional for said property. Ms. Stahl joins us this evening. Any new or additional information in regards to the second reading of ordinance number 10-2024?
Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item and recommended approval.
Counsel, with the recommendation of staff, second and final reading of ordinance number 10-2024, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to the second and final reading of ordinance number 11-2024. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Samantha T. Bennett, located at 145 Fernwood Drive, by 100% petition, and to establish its own classification for SN. It is a new classification of suburban neighborhood for said property. Ms. Stahl, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance 11-2024?
Planning Commission held a public hearing for this item as well and recommended approval.
Staff, second and final reading of ordinance number 11-2024 comes to us with approval from council. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion. And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes.
Counsel, let's move to new business. First item before us this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 12-2024. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a portion of a certain property owned by Wood Memorial Park, located at 863 Gap Creek Road from SN to Commercial Corridor. Ms. Stahl, information in regards to ordinance 12-2024?
Yes, this is docket number RZ 24-01. The address is 863 Gap Creek Road. The existing zoning is suburban neighborhood, and the request is to rezone a portion of the parcel to Commercial Corridor with the intent of building a crematorium.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? You willing to answer questions if it comes up?
Yes, sir.
With that, then, we'll move forward. I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
Just as, for my information, what made, was it just because the zoning and this, because I guess the crematorium goes right along with the graveyard? I mean, so that's just, they just had to do that because?
Yes, so the memorial parcel itself is zoned suburban neighborhood right now, and we can't have a commercial operation in a residential zone, so we need to subdivide and create a commercial parcel for them.
So a graveyard, or it can be in suburban neighborhood?
I think in the past it was. It certainly was. It was previously R12. I did not do the research on where it goes now, but I certainly can.
I believe we have an example across the street. When we, we changed it now, I think it's minimum of five acres, maybe? No. It's a minimum now.
It's very large now. That's true.
So, and again, this is to Jay's point, by virtue of the fact that they sell those plots and there is typically a sales office on those grounds, is that, how is that zoned?
Right now, the entire grounds are zoned, you know, residential, so I'm not sure, is there, is there anything on site? There's no sales office on site. I didn't see one either.
Thank you. Others?
Is this, you said there intended as a crematory?
Yes, that's correct.
Is this be like the first one we'll have in the city limit?
No, I believe there's one other. On point set. Is there?
I don't think there are in the city limits.
So they are very regulated, there's no smoke, there's no odor or anything like that. Probably won't even know it's there.
More questions? Further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood.
Yes.
Mr. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Hopper.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Daner.
Yes. Thank you, ma'am. First reading of ordinance number 14-2024. This is an ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds in one or more series, tax-exempt or taxable in an amount not to exceed the city's constitutional debt limitation, as that limit may change from time to time, to provide for the funding of various capital projects as part of an installation purchase-type arrangement, authorizing the city administrator to prescribe the form and details of the bonds, providing for the payment of the bonds and the disposition of the proceeds of the bonds, providing for borrowing in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, providing for the disposition of property related to the bonds, providing authority for the city to reimburse itself for expenditures prior to borrowing, providing for the creation and/or utilization of one or more entities to facilitate an installment purchase-type arrangement, providing for other matters related thereto. Mr. Merriman.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. This is the bond ordinance, the first reading of the bond ordinance that we have discussed for a while now, and leading up to this point, this is the reading that will effectuate the process by which we would begin the issuance of bonds and set forth the steps necessary to get that done. There will be an action by council tonight, and if that action is approved this evening, then the next steps would be to utilize the entity that's established to issue debt on behalf of the city. Then council would then take a second action on this ordinance, which would also include a resolution that ratifies the action of the entity that's going to issue debt on our behalf, and then we would then go through the process of executing the bonds process itself. This is a, it will take a couple months to make this happen, but this is what authorizes the city to go through that.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
Will Greer Trust enter into this at some point?
We, yes, sir, we are obligated through this, through the installment purchase revenue bond process, to utilize a 501(c)(3) to issue debt on behalf of the city. However, the city is absolutely the guarantor of that debt.
Mr. Merriman, would you, we had this discussion briefly the other day, but just run through that list of way, potential ways to pay for the bond or pay off the bond?
Yes, sir. The installment purchase revenue bond option that we've utilized, we use for this facility in City Park and then the municipal court complex, allows for any type of revenue generated by the city to be used to retire those bonds. So, for example, if we were to, you see water sewer bonds, et cetera, to pay those bonds off, the revenue generated is pledged to that. Under the installment purchase revenue bond program or process, the city is able to use any type of fund to retire that debt. It could be ad valorem taxes, it could be hospitality and accommodations tax revenue, it could be fund balance appropriation, whatever this council deems on an annual basis on how that will be paid back, as long as the bonds are paid in the year, that's how we would go about paying these off on an annual basis.
Would it be fair to say that in addition to the traditional ways and state-approved ways, that there are a number of other vehicles outside of that formula as well, too, that can be used to offset other costs that may not be, or could be related directly to a recreation facility, such as impact fees on houses that would be delineated to produce a certain amount of revenue per unit so that new citizens share in the cost? I think that was something that was brought up earlier in our meeting, and I think there are other ways as well, too, are there not?
Yeah, there is, and again, I was more specifically referencing things that we could actually do in a vacuum if we were doing these today. Mr. Mayor, yes, I've mentioned you all on a number of occasions, and I've heard you as a council to some degree echo that concern, is that impact fees are something that we are going to be pursuing or at least debating in one way, shape, or form, and we really have a model of that already with the, through the development agreement process when we annex new properties, is to have a per-unit fee that's paid to go towards capital infrastructure. But yes, sir, to answer your question, I would highly recommend that being utilized to retire the debt, at least a significant portion of this debt.
I have two things, two comments. The first being about the revenue. This council and prior, we've always talked about, we don't want to do development or projects or bring in businesses that where there is a direct, I guess... projects or bring in businesses that, that's, where there is a direct, I guess, impact on the pocketbook for existing citizens. Meaning, we don't want to have to raise taxes on somebody that's been here a day, who's been here all their life, to pay for something new. Growth shouldn't cause us to have to, to, to raise just taxes. I mean, the cost of doing business always goes up and you're going to have to have revenue to do that. But, and, and the lion's share of these dollars is, you know, looks like it's going to be going towards a recreation facility. And although I agree with, I think it's a good, it's a, I think everything that we've set forth to try to achieve is very good. We just need to do all we can to make sure we're not laying this development on the backs of our citizens that exist now. When we have new businesses and new, new residents that move here, I'm, I am totally behind these impact fees. And, you know, just as a testament, the annexation fee has done wonders for us. So the other is, we had a lady speak this evening about the growth and her opinion that was irresponsible and I strongly disagree with that. But I would recommend that, that folks who have that opinion, and I appreciate, appreciate her coming because it allows me to say this, that those folks need to look at a few things. Go back and look at the history of our city from, let's just say, just take a point 1980. And talk to people who were alive during that point and ask them what Greer was like at that point. Greer was, this downtown was literally falling in. A lot of things changed between then and now. I would also suggest that after they look at that history, look at state law versus, state law regarding annexation versus city size and population. And then compare it to any other state. And you'll find out that cities in our state have the most oppressive annexation laws there are nationwide. So for a city to grow like Greer has and a lot of other cities throughout the upstate and coastal regions, it, it, it takes a lot of work and effort. So people who are against the growth may ask, well, why do you want this growth? I mentioned it a minute ago, that regardless, if, if we add a fire station or don't add a fire station, the, the cost of running a fire department or a police department every year goes up. It's, it's like running your own business. It goes up regardless. The, the cost of doing business goes up, whether it's anything to do with labor, fuel, equipment, just, just think about that. So cities have to have revenue to pay those expenses. And there's only a couple of ways that we can do that. And one is taxing the people every year. Because, you know, there, there is, the inflation goes on. And that's not a good thing. Nobody wants to continue to pay higher and higher taxes and you're not getting any more in return. So what our, what, what our previous leaders have done and what this council is trying to do now is we have to balance the right growth that's going to benefit our city. Because there is one constant, regardless if we shut down and we said today, we are not going to allow any new construction, we're not going to issue any new business license, that, that, those, that new development, those new businesses, they may not locate here, but you better believe they'll go right outside our city limits and they will locate there. And when they do, for all the folks in here that's in the city, we actually wind up having to pick up costs that they generate. Because they'll be driving through our city and they'll crash a car. We have to go out and pay for that. Or we have to go out and service that wreck and so that, that costs money. They're driving on our streets and everybody knows that roads throughout this state are a big issue. And we have tried to keep the city streets where, where they are in good shape. So we're not playing catch up like counties and our state is at this point. So you have to have growth and you have to have managed growth. Because our growth is not willy nilly. Our growth is, this council and our staff, we look at everything as closely as we can. And yeah, we'll make mistakes. But it's not that, that we are going out and going to these home builders and developers, hey, come to Greer. They, everybody knows where Greer is. Our late Senator, State Senator Vern Smith always said Greer was the center of the universe. And you look around, I mean, that's, that, people have found that. They, they know, they know that our people are good, we have a very good work ethic, our morals are good. Yeah, we have our problems, but one of the things you can say is when you, if there's an issue in Greer and it's about somebody in Greer, that Greer will take care of Greer. The last thing I would say is that if people who have issues with the growth, that there was a noise issue discussed tonight. And the zoning, and there's a lot of effort that goes into zoning, but this gentleman, he, he said when he moved there, well, one of the things, the reason he was able to move there is that subdivision, I mean, it was hailed as, you know, a great thing for Greer because that was one of the first new subdivisions that was built and annexed into the city. The businesses out on Highway 14 where he's referring to, they've always been there and that zoning has basically been, been there with it. So there's a lot of elements that go on with all that we're doing. And right now, we're talking about how we're going to fund some of this. And I don't think anybody on this council wants to raise taxes on people who have been here. We want, we want, we want our growth to pay for what our services that we provide. We had a, an administrator one time was asked about, you know, why, why do people even want to live in the city? They pay double taxes. That's false, you don't pay double the taxes. And he said, I will never dispute that living inside our city is cheaper than living in the county. But we offer premium services that a lot of folks in the county do not receive. And our citizens over time, and they say this at the ballot, they, they say it on our telephone, we want these services. And the things that we are looking at providing through this issuance of bonds, our citizens have said over time, we want this. But that's my spiel.
Thank you, sir. This is a follow-up to the councilman's remarks, and I know we've got some folks here that can answer this fairly readily. I know there is some confusion sometimes because the revenue sources that a city had is often, has is often complex. But ad valorem taxes makes up a relatively small portion of that number. What number does ad valorem taxes in our total budget equal to? About 42%. So half of what we generate in, in terms of an operating budget, I think that, that certainly grows, somewhat grows, less than half of that actually comes from ad valorem taxes as opposed to other revenue sources. So just as a comment in that regard. Others?
Yeah, I've got a few questions. I know Greer Made is a big brand here in the area, you know, BMW, Michelin. I think our, even our downtown uses the Greer Made mantra. When, from a bond perspective, is there any things we can do to implement that this money is being spent by Greer, Greer citizens, being Greer made in, in a sense?
Well, I think what's going to help us through this process, especially when we meet with the credit rating agencies, is that they understand Greer's story. And that is the intent of meeting with those credit, the credit agencies in particular, is that they can then turn around and sell to the, sell in the, the sense that convince the purchasers of the bonds that Greer is investing in itself and that there will be the, the return on investment that these are intended to provide. So to answer your question, yeah, that's all part of the story that we're trying to tell not only our citizens to remind them what we're doing, but more, more importantly, those folks that'll buy these bonds and the credit agencies that will establish our interest rate on these bonds, to understand that this is, we've invested in our community in a number of ways and that's one of the ways in particular we can discuss.
Going through this process, I mean, at first I was on the fence of, because I don't want to do development on the backs of citizens. But as we've kind of shed this, you know, peeled this onion apart, I like the fact that a lot of this development is not going to be buried on the back of our citizens and we'll be able to kind of shift things around and the newcomers and developers and we've talked about that stuff, will be bearing the brunt of that. So in essence, some, some may say you are, some may receive it as stifling growth because some of the developers may not want to pay that price to come to our city, which is, which is fine. But at least, you know, we, we've, we've looked at that and took it into consideration. So thank you and staff for, for taking a close examination of this.
I'll add agreement to what Mr. Booker, Mr. Airwood has said. I'm glad that, I think it's timely that we're beginning to discuss impact fees. I know it's something we've had on our mind for a while, but just kind of the current market conditions and what we have going on and some of the services that we need to fund, I think it does make sense. Just echoing again, as an alternative source of funding, funding what our citizens are asking of us, what they deserve, but keeping it off their back in every way possible. I want to thank staff for literally the hundreds of hours that I know have gone into each one of these projects that we're discussing. What makes me feel very confident in our direction is that these represent needs and desires and asks that our citizens recognize today. These, these are needs that we have today. Not to mention, as we move into the future, I know that, you know, obviously the big centerpiece of this is, is the recreation, athletics and recreation facility, what is something that was said in the press conference this morning, just one piece of programming that we have in our current facility that's inadequate is our summer camp program. It struck me that in 30 seconds of, of the online registration, that program was filled up and we've already grown a waitlist. That is one of dozens of pieces of programming in that facility that city kids can't take part in because our facility is today, our today's citizenry can't participate in. Would you, fine, build a wall around the city. We, we have a need that this facility is going to, going to fill for decades to come, for, call it the next half century or more. And our citizens deserve this, they've asked us of this. All the feedback that I've received today has been overwhelmingly positive. Anybody that has questions about these four projects or growth in general, I'll make the, the offer that I do regularly, the coffee's on me. Call me, I'd love to have a conversation face to face, talk about our role, what we're doing, why we're doing it and how to be part of the solution. So fully, fully support where we're headed.
Mark, I want to echo your comments on the need for improving recreation. My son participated in the Greer Recs program for basketball this year and the facility that we have currently is totally inadequate. We have one court that is trying to take care of a rapidly growing population. In fact, we had several games that were almost canceled this year because we had leaks going on at the facility. There was some moisture that had gotten on the floor during rain events coming from outside, just inadequate control of humidity in the facility. And the stands are very difficult for fans to get in and out of, they're extremely low. And then you can tell based on kind of what you're talking about with the after school and some of the adult programming we have indoors with pickleball and different things like that, all that stuff is crammed over in the corner and kids are climbing on it and it's not adequately stored and housed and our staff constantly has to work those items to get those set up and back out. And they do a fabulous job to, to work with what they have, but it is truly inadequate and it, and it is, to upgrade and update this facility for something that's state of the art and something that needs to, to be seen here in Greer is long overdue. And so I'm, I'm happy to support this project tonight.
Not to mention, coming to, to your point, taking it a step further, it's either the eight-year-olds playing basketball or the 80-year-olds playing pickleball, but never at the same time. The reality is our city is at a point where if we can, we need to let as many people enjoy these facilities, these, this programming as we can, even simultaneously. This, I see a huge opportunity in this facility in that regard as well. I don't think we've even, I don't, I don't remember it being brought up, Mr. Merriman, Mayor, this morning, but I'm super excited. This is a big investment, but we see this being able to be self-sustaining and self-funding even from an operational standpoint when we get up and running, correct?
Yes, sir. I think the pro formas and economic impact analyses that were done on this are very bullish on its ability to pay for itself from a operational standpoint by year two and then by year three to five, generate somewhere in the neighborhood of 17 to 20 million dollars a year in economic impact to the city. So, yeah, I definitely think that, to the point that, that you made, that this will absolutely meet the needs of our existing citizenry. And anybody that uses our recreation programs, if you built a wall around the city, that, that organic growth, this needs to be in place to accommodate that. But with what can be attracted by a facility like this and the money from outside that'll be generated within the city, more than covers this cost and will help to continue supporting our vibrant economy in Greer.
So what I'm hearing is a world-class facility allows us to expand the breadth of our offerings and programming, allows us to conduct multiple different pieces of programming simultaneously and is going to meet our needs, again, call it the next half century or more. And we project that our citizens aren't even going to have to fund it from an operational standpoint.
I think that is absolutely.
I think that's a slam dunk win.
Let's not forget too, that there's, there's three other pieces to this project and that there's, you've got a parking facility and two that are dedicated to public service, or, excuse me, public safety, a, a, a new fire station and a state-of-the-art training facility for police and fire, which will not only give our folks a place to train, we'll be able to host training from, and bring people in, not just in a different county, but bring them across the US to, to Greer. And when they're here, they're going to spend their money here in Greer. The, the new fire station is, is, is great and yet the, this training facility is great and the rec- The new fire station is great, and yet, this training facility is great, and the recreation portion of it is going to be great. And yes, to the speaker's point tonight about, you know, this growth, this development will bring in more folks. Well, yep, that's right. But the facility we sit in tonight was not always here. Our city never had their own city hall. We were either renting a space or we were given a space. And we made the commitment to do this. It was twenty, twenty, excuse me, it's $20 million to do-
Plus.
-police and courts, plus this. You look out here tonight, just looking out at the park, there's people out all the time. People come here because it is a great place. Now, what was here before that? It was kind of empty place, empty-
Cheeseburgers.
Well, Louis's Drive-In-
Drive-In restaurant.
Louis's Drive-In was here until they closed. So, yeah, she is correct that it will bring more folks. But if we do it correctly, it will be a benefit for city residents, city businesses, people who visit us.
Mr. Mayor, I'll remind everyone of something that you tell us frequently, with the growth and the problems that come with it, there are a lot of small towns and a lot of towns within about a three-hour drive that would love to have those problems. And we've done a fine job since I've been on board of managing problems, and I believe we can continue to do that.
Thank you. Others?
We constantly hear residents talking about the growth, the traffic, and I will admit, you know, but the traffic actually started growing when BMW came into town and has continued since that time. So I know when BMW opened up, we were overwhelmed as residents here with all the traffic going on because of BMW. But BMW has certainly benefited the area, bringing many, I don't know, I don't know if we got 8,000, 11,000 employees out there or something now. So it has really benefited the area. So hopefully, the plans that the city has presented will continue to benefit the area. I know the fire department's definitely needed. The training facility will be a great asset. I'm sure that once the sports complex or the recreational complex is complete, that it will definitely be a big benefit, too. And I remember and recall, because it was during the time that I was running for office, that I was hearing people complain about this complex right here. How could the city do anything like this? This is not Greer. This does not represent Greer. But you see how crowded it is at times and how useful it has been and the many attractions that go on here and the many compliments that are received on this facility. They did a great job.
Thank you.
Which includes an award-winning green space, I might add, as well. We love park and green space in Greer. You all have been committed to it long before I ever had the opportunity to join you, and certainly will continue that if I have anything to say about it moving forward.
Well, if you go out during the peak hours, you're going to have a lot of traffic. If you go out during school time, work time, you're going to have the traffic. But if you could wait an hour or two and go out, then the traffic has definitely changed. But I know those that have to get to work at a certain time can't wait on the peak hour to change. So you are going to run into obstacles, and there's always going to be obstacles in our life. That's part of nature, part of life.
Counsel, thank you for weighing in. I think sometimes we spend a lot of time on the backside of these issues that never gets seen in some regards by the public. And, you know, this has been a process that has been ongoing for a year, year and a half at this point. And I thought back earlier today to the fact that while some of this council has been together since the early 2000s and at least the mid-2000s and has managed a plethora of projects and acquisitions well in excess of $100 million if you add up from 2008 forward. You know, we've done an incredible job of providing for our citizens at a level and quality of life that I'm proud of and I think our community is proud of. And I think that comes from having a strong and effective administration and staff. I think that comes from a community that supports our efforts, and I think it comes from a council that is visionary and entrusts the people that they need to entrust to help put that, put the legs on those visions that we have. We really have an incredible opportunity to do something over the next four or five years, and I think will change, in some regards, even the trajectory of where we are now. And I'm proud of the time and the thought that each and every one of you have put into this project and the other projects as well, too. After the announcement this morning, I mentioned to our communications department that my phone got blown up, and my email and text messages got blown up, but in a good way. The amount of support that I got in the hour or hour and a half following that, following that announcement was incredible. And then through the rest of the afternoon today, I've heard from a number of folks, some I haven't talked to in years. But the one that really made the most difference to me was a gentleman that many of you all know, that stood right there at that podium about six months ago and told us what stupid idiots we were for even considering selling that piece of property or to think about selling that piece of property. And it was a travesty that we were going to shut down that building over there. And I don't even refer to it anymore as a gym because it truly is, it was designed to be a multipurpose space. And he said, you know what? He said, I listened to the live stream today, and he said, I just wanted to apologize to you and let you know that I'm behind this project 100% and that I think we're on the right path. And if there's any way that I can help on this particular project, I'll be glad to do it. I said in that, I said in that meeting this morning, our city deserves better and we can do better, and we're at that point now. Counsel, any final thoughts?
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. We will move on to item number three this evening. First and final reading of Resolution 6-2024. A resolution pursuant to Section 4-1-170(c), Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, is amended consenting to the placement of certain property within the corporate limits of the City of Greer in a joint industrial and business park of Spartanburg and Cherokee Counties. Mr. Reno Deaton, our Economic Development Director, joins us for this conversation. Mr. Deaton, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and counsel, good evening. This request for this evening is to place a piece of property in a multi-county industrial park. The property is the Atlas in the port Greer development on Genoble Road. This is pretty standard incentive tool that we use. We've dealt with this on a number of other projects and properties in the past. Primary of interest to us in economic development is that the MCIP designation increases the jobs development tax credit for eligible jobs created at the project, increasing the value of the income tax rebate that's available to those qualifying projects. Happy to answer any questions that I can for you. Mayor and counsel.
First and final reading of Resolution Number 6-2024. The purpose of discussion or questions I'll entertain a motion that we receive?
So move.
Second. And a second. Floor is open for discussion.
Reno, is this speculative development or is it, is it, they have someone that's-
Yeah, a great story. So initially, the project started as a speculative project. They expanded the footprint of the speculative project before it was completed. Now that it's been completed, we've landed two companies, most recently the Omron announcement that we were so fortunate to see, and Mayor Danner participated in with Spartanburg County, and our Lieutenant Governor has landed there as well.
Discussion? Comments?
Reno, how long do the tax credits last? Are they just ongoing as long as the project is viable?
So typically, that's a negotiated agreement with the county that, but the tax credit applies for the duration of the agreement typically negotiated, negotiated down to a term of years that mirrors the special source revenue credit, if that makes sense to you. It's a lot of information all at once. So that typically is deployed in the first couple of years.
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. First and final reading of Resolution Number 8-2024. This is a resolution to accept Paxton Meadows subdivision streets, namely Lifestyle Court and Courtyard Court into the City of Greer street system. David Buchanan, our civil engineer, joins us for this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Today, we're here to request the city take ownership and maintenance responsibilities for the roads inside of Paxton Meadows. This project started in 2019. It is located off Brushy Creek and approximately 640 feet from the intersection of Brushy Creek and Belshire Drive. This lies within Council District Five. All the utilities are installed and the streets are paved. All 49 lots are built out. Our staff inside the engineering department has inspected the construction and believe it meets our city standards. Lifestyle Court is approximately 744 and a half feet. Courtyard Court is approximately 700 even. Additional information is in your packets tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive?
So move.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Can our civil engineer introduce himself?
Good evening, sir. My name's David Buchanan. Graduated Clemson University in 17. Originally from Anderson, been in the area, have a bunch of family in Greer. Enjoyed it so far, so thank you, sir.
David joined us a while back. How long?
About a month ago, sir.
About a month ago, okay. Yeah, I was thinking it was longer than that, and I guess some of our conversations must have happened right after you hit the door then, so we appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for joining our staff. Where am I, Ms. Duncan?
You have a motion.
Have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Floor is open for discussion. Okay. At that point, any other discussion, questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, the last item before us this evening is the first and final reading of Resolution 9-2024. Resolution of the City of Greer, South Carolina, a declaring reallocating funds and redesignating projects related to expenditures made as part of a 2021 lease purchase plan of finance and providing for other related matters. Mr. David Seifert, our Chief Financial Officer, joins us for the conversation.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. To provide you some background and understanding of the two lease purchases in question here in our, I'll start with the 2024, our current lease purchase that we are in. We had a couple of projects that came in over budget from when we budgeted them a year ago, and then by the time they got in place, they were a little more expensive. So there were other assets in the 2024 lease purchase plan that we did not purchase to pay, you know, so we could finish out the project that was coming in over. Looking at the 2022 lease purchase fiscal year, this is the 2021 calendar year, 2022 fiscal year lease purchase, again, there were assets in that plan of purchase that we then subsequently, subsequently changed what we were doing, and that was related to assets for the recycle center. So those assets, again, decided we were not going to purchase those assets, which relieved an amount of money. So we approached the bank, and the assets that we could not buy in '24, we were trying to apply to the money in lease purchase '22. So we're just transferring assets from one program to another, from fiscal '24 to fiscal '22. To do that, the bank was requiring this resolution to reallocate those assets in the funding mechanism. This resolution gives the authorization of the city and the bank to do so.
Counsel, a recommendation from staff, I'll entertain a motion to receive?
So move.
And a second.
Second.
The floor is open for questions or discussion. And Mr. Seifert?
So the pieces listed in the resolution, we're getting those, we're not getting those, what year will they pick for?
The flail mower and the leaf box were in the '24 program that we pulled out to cover the overage. And then the procurement software is a project we're implementing right now that was a benefit to the city to improve our procurement practices and processes, and wanting to apply that to that '22 money that we did not buy the assets for the recycle center. So those are specific assets that we have purchased and in the process of implementing.
The lender, did they have any issue, any heartburn with any of this besides just saying, hey, make sure you get this resolution so counsel will know?
No, sir. Just a resolution authorized to do it.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, we have no items stated for executive session this evening. That concludes our regularly scheduled meeting.